I call the Perry Township July 14th meeting to order. Jason, will you do the pledge for us?
Yes ma'am. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is, I'm sorry. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Oh, my mind went blank. I've been teaching the kids this.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation.
Nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Apologies for that.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Binkin, will you call roll?
Mears?
Yes.
When?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
For the record, F.O. Binkin and zoning administrator slash office assistant Karen Kayler are present.
Okay, and first on our agenda is Kevin Williams with Liberty and Nathaniel Life Insurance. Is he on?
Uh, yes ma'am, I am.
Okay, great. Hi, how are you?
I am well, and I do appreciate you allowing me to join you this evening virtually. I know I was working with Rhonda on planning on being there in person.
Okay. So if you want to go ahead with your presentation?
I sure can, well, thank you. Well, trustees, my name is Kevin Williams and I am a supervising benefits supervisor with Liberty National. We have offices located, one in Columbus and one in Cincinnati. My family lives within Perry Township, actually out on Keener Road. So I am familiar with Perry Township and I'm also familiar with Brookville in general. I know last week I had presented to Clay Township trustees and I'm currently working with Mr. Wolf on getting some time set that we can get some dates locked down when they look at their benefits in October. So what we do here is that, and then if I can go ahead and share my screen. Okay, if that's possible. If not, I'm an auctioneer and I could sit and I can talk. I can go real fast if you like, but, well, anyway, what we do is, is that we work with townships, businesses, government agencies, all such as yourself, to provide benefits for your employees at no cost to you or the taxpayers. And we're able to do that through many different avenues. I currently partner with several townships here in Ohio. Here in Champaign County where I live, we're partnering with Union Township and also Goshen Township. Oh, thank you. So if I can go ahead and, uh, there we go. So as I mentioned, we currently, I'm currently partnering with several townships. And what kind of makes me feel uniquely qualified to speak with you tonight is, is that my father is a trustee and my sister is a fiscal officer. And as we kind of talk through, you know, the struggles for townships to be able to find, to retract and retain good employees can especially be a challenge for small governments. So when this, when I switch gears within my career, formerly I was a, I was an agricultural instructor. I'm an ag teacher. Taught business and things like that. So when I went to change gears and found that I had an opportunity to be able to, you know, to work with our township and especially with our employee, you know, we definitely jumped on board with that. So to give you a little bit more of that, who we are is that we work, like I said, with businesses like yours to provide benefits. Liberty National has been around for over 120 years. Our parent company is Globe Life and we have more combined policy holders of life insurance. There we go, a company in the whole country. We have over 3.7 man policies at force and we fulfill more than 129,000 claims fulfilled every year. How we're able to do that is, is that we have some unique benefits that we have. And what makes us again attractive to a lot of our small governments and townships and entities is that we're able to provide both life and living benefits that are both permanent and portable. So if any of your employees ever decide to leave their current job or when they retire, those policies go with them. Coverages cannot be canceled as long as the premiums are paid on time. And because I have family locally and I'm also now partnering with several businesses in Brookville, including the Brookville Grill. I've also currently formed a partnership with Image Payback and I'm also working with Zach Music or Rett Music Automotive. So again, with my family being there, I want to be able to support not just them, but other families within your community. So I am your personal licensed agent, as so that says there. Now here's what makes us really different than everybody else. You're not going to find us doing TV commercials. You're not going to find us doing all kinds of jingles and things like that because we reinvest back into our businesses. And we're able to do that by doing this. At no cost to Perry Township, and again, I just remind, no cost to the taxpayers. Our company will provide to every employee elected and also rightfully employed a $3,000 accidental death coverage for you. We'll also provide $3,000 accidental death coverage for their spouse and also $1,000 coverage per dependent child. Again, that's at no cost. That's on us to you for us to say thank you for partnering with us and allowing me the opportunity to be able to grow and grow with your employees. We will also, and again, this is, and this is something I really want to emphasize. This is not just for full-time employees. We're also able to provide these accidental death policy and the next product to your part-time employees as well. So when it does come time to start looking for crews, additional crews to work on the cemetery, to work within roads, mowing, whatever it is that township needs, you can now add that you do offer these benefits. And that's what our townships here are doing as well. The second piece that we will provide to you, to each and every employee that sits down with us, again, at no cost, is a non-insurance discount card that has a discount on average of 10 to 85% on health services, which include vision, hearing, prescription drugs, and even chiropractic care. It has even been known to be used on pet minutes. So what you would do is, is that you just have your employees or in yourselves go to our website and put in the promo code, enter your code, and it tells you everywhere within the radius of where you live that that card is good for. We do have folks that, because we do not replace anything, that if, you know, we have employees whose spouses have vision plans where they'll use the vision plan to be able to pay for like for frames. But this discount card will then kick on and give them the benefits of paying for the lenses. So those, everything that we do is completely stackable. And again, this is on behalf of us to you and with your employees, what we tell them is, is that as, as for our arrangement, that's our way of saying thank you and that you want to negotiate that for us. Basically, I just go through with each one of your employees and I talk through about final expensive, you know, anything like that, mortgage protection, income protection, medical expenses. But here's the piece that I really want to talk to you here again, and I want to be cognizant of your time. Earlier I had mentioned that we offer a product that's completely portable and, again, all of our products are. But this plan here is our flagship. And what this is, is we call it the group term 65. And what that means is, is that it is a policy that's paid up at 65 and the coverage is good for up through age 100. The purpose of this is, is that because of our partnerships with businesses working with work sites, we know that really within the average age of retirement, and as people are living longer, we're looking at 65 years of age. So that allows your employees that were during their working years, they can pay off that life insurance policy. So when they turn 65, the policy's done. The coverage is good through the remainder of their life or up to age 100. There's pre-tax savings because this is also payroll deducted. The first $50,000 of employee coverage is the pre-tax piece, which then when they do payroll deduction, what that allows to happen is, is that you report less payroll as a township and the employees, obviously then on the other end will report less income. So this is an advantage both ways. Employees save somewhere about 20%. So what the purpose here is, is that this policy is completely portable. So when, when your employees retire, resign, terminated, whatever it is maybe, they take the plan with them. And it's costing you as the township no money. All that happens is that when there is a change, I, you just take them off your payroll, I get notified and then I contact them about the remaining coverage through bank draft. We have guaranteed rates. I do all the underwriting myself, so once you purchase a plan, those rates will never increase. The rates won't increase and the benefit amount will never decrease. Coverage can never be reduced or canceled as long as premiums are paid. We can, not coverage only for them, but also their spouses and also their dependents. So as long as policies stay in force, death benefits, like I said, will never decrease. We do offer, and I talked about some, some help, living health benefits and plans. We, I'll talk with your employees about if there's a history of cancer. We have like in a cancer endurance plan that is basically is for life as long as the premiums are paid. There's no overall lifetime maximum benefit. So for first occurrence of cancer, there's a $3,500 payment to the bank deposit for every chemo, radiation treatment, every hospitalization, there's payments. And we will even, up to six times a year, if the James at Ohio State doesn't offer a, doesn't offer a treatment, six times a year, we will pay for that employee and they're likely to be able to travel to the, the service of their, of their choice, as long as it's greater than 100 miles. Again, this, this coverage continues even after they leave and pull up. All they need to do is make sure that the policy's paid up and I work within that, on that end of it there. We also do cash policies for critical illness. We can do policies up to $10,000 to $50,000. Again, it's very, very affordable because we also, because they do have those tax breaks to it. And the last piece I have here is that we offer a product called the Accident Protector Max. And what this will do is, is that this is on and off the job protection, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is completely, totally stackable and works right along with Workman's Comp. So this coverage is not only for, for your employees. If you, I can't remember what Rhonda mentioned to me, but Rhonda, are you guys weekly or bi-weekly?
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly? Okay. On a bi-weekly plan, this plan right here for an employee is $5.56 every two weeks. What it'll do is, is that it'll provide for any accidents. As long as they go to the emergency room within the first 48 hours, they'll receive up to $500 in the bank account. There are benefits for transportation, whether it be squad, whether they're airlifted. It's guaranteed renewable up to age 65 and everything is paid directly into your bank account. They can do everything technologically. They can just do it right there on their cell phones. The other piece that's really, that's a lot of our folks taking advantage of is not only can they protect their family, especially if they're in sports. I got my wife's cousin wrestles at Brookville and, and I think we know that within sports, kids are constantly get hurt. You know, anytime that there are those types of injuries and they go to the emergency room, the first time that your child has to go in and you use this, it pays for the premium for the year. And, and you can use that money after $500 to pay for the copay. So that's where a lot of our blue collar families really take advantage of this plan. We do have riders that go along with this one here that will provide accidental death protection coverage up to $50,000 if death happens to be by automobile accident and even up to $250,000 if it's a plane, train, or a fare raging thing, how this works. So basically, you know, in a nutshell here, what we'll do is, is that I'm just asking trustees, please allow me the opportunity to meet with each of your employees. Allow me to provide for them the two no-cost items, which includes the $3,000 accidental death policy for them, $3,000 for their spouse, $1,000 per dependent child. Allow me to provide for them the, the non-insurance discount card. Let me talk with them, see if there is a need and if there is, and they so choose to protect their families, I just ask you, allow me to do that and you allow them to do that through payroll deduction. Are there any questions?
I have two questions.
Yes ma'am.
Is there a minimum number of employees necessary to enroll in order for this to come to our township?
Honestly, one. If one employee took something out. Ms. When, in all honesty right now, in light of currently what's going on within society, I am really using this first opportunity to be able, just to get to know the employees, you know, try to work through some fears, get them the two no-cost items and then follow up in six months. And, and then be able to, if need to adjust then. Because we're looking at, what is today's the 14th? You know, if so agree, your enrollment, I'm looking at 7:15 through 8:30, which means at 45 days. You know, if I'm able to, next week and meet with them, they would be able to receive free coverage up until September the 1st, when those payroll deductions were to occur. I have somewhere, Ms. When, I have somewhere around an 80% of the folks who sit down with me take a policy. Because they are affordable and, and I'm a teacher. I don't hard sell. Because really, how am I doing you any good? How am I doing them any good about putting somebody in something that they're not comfortable with? Because at the end of the day, you know, my job is, is to work for you, is to work for your employees and be able to provide for their families. You know, like I said, it's, I'm just looking for an opportunity to grow with you.
Okay, my second question on the critical illnesses, is it limited to the ones that were listed on your page or that was just an example of?
They are, we know, they are limited to, and I'm going to go back and I'm going to look at that page again, just, just so I don't tell you wrong. We do have on the, let's see, we do have an intensive care policy. Ah, here we go. On the cancer policy, there are two different types on the critical illness. Normally what folks will do is, is that if they do take a cancer endurance policy for another dollar more, they'll take like a $10,000 critical illness. But outside of that, most folks who do take the critical illness, we are really limited to the heart attack, the stroke, major, major organ transplant. I cite the hearing. Honestly, I've never really dealt with those before. But because we know that really every 40 seconds, somebody's having, you know, somebody's having a heart attack or a stroke. And what, and Ms. When, when I have the conversations with them, it's basically are there histories of that within your family? If the history is there and they've never been tested, diagnosed, then that, then they are a great candidate for this. Unfortunately, if they have been diagnosed, then it's pre-existing and I can't really help at that point. So really this is more of a preventative, preventative piece if it's there.
Okay, so it does not cover, it does not cover pre-existing and only covers the one list, the, what's listed there.
That is correct. If you've been diagnosed with it, and I want to make sure I'm correct in my terminology. If you've been diagnosed with it, then the eligibility for that kind of goes away then. Because at that point, you already have it. They're, they're not going to, they're not going to want to shop for something you already have. I'm just being totally honest. When I go through that needs assessment with your employees, that's what the conversation then leads to. You know, is there a history? Well, yeah, mom's had it, dad's had it. You know, I got a sister or something like that. You know, for a couple bucks, do you want to look at $10,000 or $50,000? And that's how my conversation goes and I price it for them right there. And like I said, I even do the underwriting and, and part of that underwriting is asking those questions I just, you know, I kind of included there is, you know, have you been diagnosed? That's really the big question. They ask, have you been diagnosed? If you have not been tested, you have not been diagnosed for it, then you're good.
Okay, does the township have your information that we can share with our employees that they can give you a call?
Yes, and, and Ms. Mears, that's perfect. I have, I've communicated with Rhonda.
Okay.
And she has all my information. The other piece I didn't, I didn't add to this is due to obviously the mandates right now within, within Ohio Montgomery County. I can do 100% virtual.
Okay, okay.
So the only thing, and I should have, the only thing I really need is, is a roster with the employees' names, hire dates and their contact information. I can also do face-to-face with social distancing. I've kind of got both going on right now. But again, that's what you're, you're.
Okay, so Ms. Binkin has your information. We can share that with our police department and with our road crew and then if they're interested, they can give you a call. Is that okay with you?
We can do that, but Ms. Mears, we find that it works best that when you leave it up to employee, nobody ever is going to call and say, yeah, I want insurance. And that's not really what I try to do. What I try to do is, is I'm an educator. So I, that's why my job, I would contact them directly. I would provide information for you to share with your employees, just to let them know that I would be, I would be contacted.
Okay. Okay, is anybody else getting questions?
That answered mine.
Okay. Well, Mr. Williams, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was just going to ask, you know, moving forward, what would be our next steps? Especially if we try to, you know, if we are able to partner together. I know there's a lot of things I need to do on my end and I just want to make sure that when I reach back out to Rhonda, I just wanted to have a clear path. So do you have anything additional for me? Or I guess as I'm asking, I'm just asking for next steps. Would, would you like me to stay on? Would you want me to contact Rhonda tomorrow? What is it, trustees, you would like for me to do?
What do you guys think?
I think we're going to probably have to feel it out and see how many employees are going to be interested is my thought before we waste Kevin's time in setting up a meeting for people or anything like that, that folks aren't going to reach out to.
Yeah, I think that's where the, that's where the level of comfort is, is understand how, how you do things, Mr. Williams. But, you know, we have that small core group of employees and we'd really like to get their feelings on it before we just turn over their information. I think that, that's, that's where we are right now. So give us, I don't know, maybe till the end of the week to get a temperature check with our employees and then we'll be in touch. And we'll provide you information at that time.
That would, that would, that would be fine. So then can I just go ahead and just make a note then within my calendar that, you know, if I have not heard from you by the week, just reach back out to Rhonda and, you know, and get the termination through her.
Yeah, Rhonda or Karen, I would think.
Well, perfect. Well, trustees, again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. You know, and I always like to end up with this, you know, we never know what's right around the corner, obviously. And it's kind of those wish you would have, could have things when we move on. You know, I've just, I would like to be able to that opportunity that if you did find, your employees did have that need, just allow me to be able to be the one to be able to help provide for them. And I don't want you ever worried about you're wasting my time. Because I'm here to work with families. Like I said, my family lives there within the township, so I'm never out of my way, especially if my mother, she finds out that I come by and I didn't. I'm in the area and I didn't stop by and say hi. Believe me, I'm in trouble. So, and there, I'm also there every two weeks playing bingo at BFW Hall. I'm already making a road trip anyway. So again, trustees, thank you. I look forward to hearing back from you. God bless and stay safe.
Okay, thank you very much.
Kevin.
Okay, next on the agenda is, so we need to approve the minutes and it's resolution 2020, 81 through 86. And that will be for a new settlement meeting on June 3rd. Approval minutes trustee on, trustee meeting on June 9th, abatement meeting on June 10th, special meeting on June 10th. Work session on July 1 and then approval of the bills from check 35293 to 35378. I need a motion for that.
Can we move to approve minutes and the bill payments in the same motion?
Yes, that's included in there. Resolution 2020, 81 through 86.
So moved.
Second.
When?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
One second before we move forward. Missy?
Yes.
When Kevin left, the host defaulted to you. If you could, down at the bottom of your screen, click on participants. And then come over to my name and just select make host.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And then what?
Just like me as the host.
Did it work?
I'm not the host yet. So yeah, if you right-click on my name and the participants, there should be something that says make host.
It just says mute or more.
Oh, click more, sorry.
Okay, make host, sorry.
Yes ma'am.
Change host?
Yes ma'am.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Ms. Binkin, for your report, please.
Hey, we need to discuss the fire and EMS levy. Yesterday, trustee Mears and I was on the phone with Gloria and Larry from the Montgomery County Auditor's Office. Missy, do you want to inform the other trustees?
Well, yeah, and you can help me with this. Basically, what we were doing was we were just asking their, their advice or some help with, with how we should proceed with this. And replacement levy, we have a 2.5 continuous and it really brings in 2.35. The collection rate in Perry Township is outstanding. It's 98.9. Now, they did say next year, if we waited to put the levy on until next year, they will have the new appraisals. So the values could either go up or down, so we're not really sure. So that could bring us more, more money in. Now, if we put the levy on this year and it passes, it goes by what your value is now. So if we do decide to do that, we don't have to do anything since we've already contacted them. Since we made a resolution, they just said, don't worry about that. We'll just make a new one like in January. February is the deadline to put it on the May ballot for next year. I have been in contact with Ms. Keaton up at Brookville and per the fire contract, the money is, that we owe them is deferred. So we don't have to put that money out. So it's deferred until either a levy passes or if it doesn't, we owe them that money in 2022.
We also have the money that I'm donating back.
Yeah.
That was kind of being held up if the levy went through this year. So pushing the levy to next year, letting that money roll over to both of them, paying them this year, saving the deferment.
Yeah.
Would still put us in a good position.
Right, exactly. Yes. So what I, what I was, my understanding and what I brought back from this meeting was I felt basically that I think that we should wait till next year to put the levy on. With everything that's going on with this, you know, Corona and the tornadoes and every, everything trying to start getting back up. I, I would suggest we put it on in, on May of next year.
I agree with that. The reading I had done and in the emails that Rhonda had sent from Gloria basically left that as. basically left that as the only logical solution.
Exactly.
And I, I don't think we have any problem. We've got the language done. We've got the, does the certification that we did hold over, or do we have to recertify prior to submitting it for the May election?
We'll have to re-certify, we'll have to re, yes, yeah. But we don't have to do anything with them. They just said, just let it go. If you don't put any more language or anything, just let it go, let it ride. And then we'll have to resubmit in, February is the deadline for next year. So, yeah.
And the bottom line is Brookville kind of has us over a barrel, so we have to have a levy one way or another.
We're coming up with one each year, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what, some type of, if next year we're due for property reassessment anyway, because that's supposed to take place every three years, the values could change completely. So I see it better to be safe than sorry. Wait until that assessment, wait until next year when things are a little more calm, people a little more stable. And we have, it's not a guessing game. We have solid figures to go with.
And the appraisals will be done at the end of this year. So, yeah. So we'll have a better idea of how much money will be brought in.
Right.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Binkin, you have anything?
No, I think you covered it all. I think Larry, his thoughts, and again, this is not accurate numbers, but we probably, if we did put the levy on this year, we'd only generate around $8,000 for the fire and EMS levy. And that will not even be enough. It was going to cost like 8,200 for both entities. So we need to wait till the reappraisal is complete in 2020 and put this on the ballot for 2021.
I'll make a motion that we put this on the ballot for 2021.
No, we don't need a motion right now.
Okay.
We will do this in January. We'll have to wait till 2021 because we'll have to submit for the auditor certificate.
Okay, we don't need to replace the vote that we took before. Because we had voted to put on.
Well, we, we can't vote for it now. We have to wait till the reappraisal is complete in January of 2021.
And we, we did make a resolution, but that will just, we won't mess with it. We won't go any farther with it. So it will just, it will be.
It'll carry over.
Yes. Well, no, it won't carry over. It'd just be, we'll have to make a new resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
But not at this time.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I received a call on a complaint of an old refrigerator and drunk, and junk at 5624 Hecathorne Road from the 2019 tornadoes. Do you want Karen to send a courtesy letter to remove the junk before proceeding with the nuisance abatement? Do we still have some properties out there that are not cleaned up from the tornado? Do you want to?
This is the property where the, the older lady lived in the trailer. And I believe all her items were cleaned up, so someone has been dumping there. I don't believe these are hers. I mean, because they even, they, like I said, they're, the, the frame of the trailer was left and they even hauled that out. So someone has obviously been dumping there.
Yeah, I spoke to some neighbors that live across the street and they pretty much verified what Missy said. They don't know where any of that stuff is coming from, but they don't think it's hers.
Yeah.
Well, the property owner lives in Tennessee. We'll send a courtesy letter to him because unfortunately it's his property. So he'll have to remove the junk. Or any other ideas?
We have a couple properties that have not been repaired yet. Is there a certain timeframe we're giving people or sending courtesy letters saying, hey, it's been a year, what's going on? How, how are we addressing those houses or those properties?
We have not addressed them. I know insurance companies have taken quite a while for homeowners to resolve.
Yeah, a number of houses in the township seem to be, right now, rebuilding. They started within the last month or so. Just driving through the township on a regular basis, I haven't seen any lots that stand out to me that they still don't have something being built on them currently. But I know that we did say that the township put in charge for permits for rebuilding after the tornadoes. That we can actually put a deadline on. So if, if we wanted to say that by the end of this year, just an example, that, you know, any permits for rebuilding after the 2019 tornado beyond December, the, there'll be a charge for, the normal charge for the permits. What, what are thoughts on that?
I, I don't have an issue with that. But with this, the one on Hecathorne, my only issue is with the people living in Tennessee, they're probably not aware of that.
Oh, right, yeah.
So I, I agree that we just, we need to send a courtesy letter first and see how we go, how, how, how she does that or.
Right.
He does that, but yeah.
Well, and, and they're not, it doesn't look like they're rebuilding. I mean, that double wide was gone and they moved. So if nothing else, at least getting, sending the letter to stimulate a conversation to find out what their plans are. And let them know that it is their responsibility if people are dumping on their property.
Right.
And find out how they'd want to proceed.
Yeah, and maybe they have family up here or something that could check into it or whatever. But yes, I think a courtesy letter would be, would be appropriate.
There is a house on Diamond Mill that they haven't even cleaned up yet.
No.
I don't know if we want to address that or visit that or how we want to address that one.
I don't, where is that one in?
Uh, it is south of Westbrook on the east side of Diamond Mill.
Half a mile where?
North.
Half a mile south of Westbrook.
So you're talking about the property that was completely destroyed that's north of Air Hill, south of Westbrook?
Yeah, between, yeah, the big red barn or big red, whatever it is. I don't know if it's a barn or if that was their house.
No, that was the barn. There's a house across, there's a house across the street from that that was actually completely leveled, so.
If you're talking about the red barn on Diamond Mill.
That's in Trotwood.
That's Trotwood.
Yeah, because that's on the other side of the road.
That's Trotwood, yeah.
The, the, so the other one, the one that was actually set back a ways off the road on the Perry Township side.
Right.
The one I thought she was speaking of.
Oh, yeah, because that one's, that one's been cleaned up. Yeah. Yeah.
No, I was thinking that that was still part of the township.
No, that's Trotwood.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so Rhonda, I guess have Karen go ahead and send that letter out if she doesn't mind a courtesy letter?
I will do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Or Karen, if you're on.
Okay, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, and then also for the Wiley Group Drainage Project has been approved and the estimated township assessment for Perry Township to be paid over a 15-year period. There's going to be two roads involved, Amity and Schoolhouse. Amity Road will be $615.42 and Schoolhouse Road, $2,861.07. On the agenda, I did put the current assessments that we are paying now. I do not know the timeframe for these, but the other assessments that we've been paying equals to $308.08. So we will have, after they get this project done, there'll be some more assessments that the township will need to pay.
Okay, and they're not doing any, all that is, is just like a maintenance fee. They're not, they're, it's, the project is on the Wiley Drain. That, that, that's done. This is just money to put back, bank up, yeah, for emergencies and things like that. In case a tile should go wrong or something, something like that.
The Budget Commission meeting paperwork was emailed to Montgomery County Auditors today. I emailed you trustees, the new Lebanon Fire Report. Is, there is any emails that the trustees receive, whether it be you're getting it from the entity and I'm sending the same email going forward, let me know, and I will not forward it to you. Trustee Hartshorn and Trustee Wynn have requested not to receive the TriHealth. And that's for, like, if any of our employees are in an accident, they would go for drug testing. So they just send generic emails out. And I'm going down this path that there's for another records request that there won't be as many emails that we will need to print off. For an example, the, this most recent one, there's a total number of 965 pages that needed to be printed. So like I said, if you're receiving the emails, let me know. No need for me sending them again. Reminder, it is payroll this week. I will be running that tomorrow morning. I have not started payroll. I was kind of in and out of the office today. Kind of backtracking here on the agenda, I sent a letter for a public records request on June 16th to the PO box for payment. And to date, no response or payment has been made to the township. What is our next step going forward? Do I just hang on to it? Do I send another letter? Do I get with Nathaniel?
From what I understood on the ORC, the records weren't to be released until payment was received. So is that correct that we still have those records to turn over or were they already sent?
No, I still have the records. I am waiting for payment.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Uh, there is some pre-COVID-19 pop-up testing. I saw that on the news last night and I received the information. If any residents are interested, they can call the office and I can give them the location and the, the dates and times. And I want to thank Trustee Mears. She donated her May salary of $800. Trustee Wynn donated her May salary to the general fund of $400. Trustee Hartshorn donated his May and June salary for a total of $1,894.14. And just to remind the residents that I have waived the yearly trash salary over the past three terms, which resulted in a savings to the township of over $12,000. The end of my fourth term, four more years, the total savings to the township will be $16,000. Hoping that this can keep our trash payments down as low as possible without taking that extra money. And I'd like to thank the trustees for their donations and helping our township. Is there any questions?
Okay, and I take it Mr. Kraft isn't here. So Ms. Binkin, do you have his report by any chance?
Yeah, the letter sent to the five property owners for the license for entry onto real estate. This is for the Wolf Creek Project. As of Monday, July 13th, all five residents had their, their letters notarized and returned. I did email them to Nathaniel at the prosecutor's office on Monday because he had some paperwork to do. I was very pleased when I received Nathaniel's email today that he had completed the opinion letter and emailed to the USDA. The start date for this project was to begin around May 1st and the completion date is September 7th. Due to property owners.
Slow response.
Slow response, yeah. Like I said, the last one was, was received July 13th. Now it'll have to be put out for bid, which USDA will handle all that. So it's not leaving a whole lot of time for our road crew or the contractor to go in and clean up that Wolf Creek project, so. But at least we have got to start now and hopefully they can, whether we'll cooperate and we can get in there and get work done. Nathaniel did said, did say that we need to approve, and he suggested me, since I was in here signing a lot of the paperwork, to sign on behalf of the township for the Wolf Creek Watershed Project. So I'll need a resolution for that, if your trustees are fighting with that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal officer to sign on behalf of the township for the Wolf Creek Watershed Project as requested by Nathaniel Peterson of the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office.
I have a delay. I'll still second.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Wynn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
There's been 25 funerals for the year, seven funerals within the last 10 days. Kena Road will be seeded when they, when the rain, we just haven't been getting a whole lot of rain in this area. So they don't want to put the grass seed down with these high temperatures. Just nothing will grow. They've been mowing cemeteries, leveling graves and seeding graves, working on the police evidence room and installing the burn box on the International 2001 Dump Truck. And that's all for the road department.
Okay, great. Okay, and Ms. Karen, you, or do you have your report?
I do.
Okay.
On the, the third quarter 2020 trash bills were mailed on June 30th. And in zoning permits issued was three hole barns. One was destroyed by the tornado and one above brown swimming pool permit. And also, we need a request, to request a resolution for mowing of the green property. That's all I have.
Okay, so we need to make a motion for you, for Ms. Binkin to to proceed with the.
This will be to send to the Montgomery.
County Auditors.
Yeah, for the tax assessments.
Okay, so I make a motion that Ms. Binkin contacted the Auditor's Office to, for the green property at 15800 Little Richmond Road, Brookville, Ohio. The amount to be assessed, $556.90 for the mowing. I make that motion.
Second.
Mears?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Wynn?
You're muted, Mindy.
Wynn, Mindy?
Yes.
Thank you. And for the Police Department, Chief just came in and told me he has four applicants in the hiring phase. And that's all he had for his report.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, now on to the trustees' reports. I guess I'm going first. Mr. Kraft and myself spoke to the homeowner on Kena Road regarding the signature notarization for the watershed, which we talked to him yesterday and they turned it in yesterday, which was great. Went and met with the homeowner on Steck Road regarding an issue with vandalism on the road. Left note for them to call me. Spoke with the owner the following day. Called Montgomery County Health again, issue, about the issue that we're having out here, no return call. Had a teleconference along with Ms. Binkin regarding our levy for the fire department. Talked to Mr. Kraft regarding mowing of the cemeteries. Met with Chief Littleton and Sergeant Hessler regarding the property room and with the heat and worried about the property in the room, in the property room being ruined. Met with Ms. Kayla about two properties. As soon as homeowners gets, gets with her, she will be going out. And Ms. Kayla has asked me to ride along. And also, talked to a homeowner on Providence Road regarding a noise ordered, or the, or the, or beans. And also, I would personally like to thank the person who mowed the Hicks property. And that's all I have.
I think I know who that is. There was a, that neighbor that you've been speaking to in Paramount Bentley.
Yes.
Called the township and asked if he could mow the Hicks property and wanted the police department to know that he was not going to go into the home or any of the buildings. He was just trying to clean up as much as he could in that area.
Plus, he's hard. Yes.
So that was.
Yes. Yes, I'll stop down and thank him myself in person, so. Okay, Ms. Wynn, your report?
Okay, well, last week I was enrolled in and I completed five courses from the Ohio Township Association's Leadership Account. Hey, well, last week I was enrolled in and I completed five courses from the Ohio Township Association's Leadership Academy. Because of COVID, they were all held via webinar. There were some very good and helpful topics and I'll definitely be referring to those during my time in office. I've spent a bit of time driving around the township, speaking to a lot of folks, cleaning up some trash and picking up debris. And in doing so, I've noticed that there's a lot of really nice, very old houses and very old buildings in our township. And in speaking with residents, I've learned that there's a really rich history that I would love to see shared. So I know we've got a lot of families that not only know the history and heritage, but they are the history and heritage. So I'd like to ask that if there are anyone out there that has a historic home or historic business or some of the families that have been here for many generations, Miss Mirs. To potentially share stories, share some history on either our webpage or Facebook page. So that we can start to compile things about our history and going forward, be able to share a lot of that with either more families or new families, either one. I've been attending various meetings around the county, all being held by Zoom. The general consensus is that none of the county offices have any plans to return to live meetings anytime soon. I've been getting situational reports almost daily from my contact at Homeland Security and from the Public Health Department of Montgomery County. And regardless of who is right or who is wrong or what we choose to believe. We are potentially in this COVID thing for the long haul. So I think if we can encourage people to participate in Zoom. We've got what eight people here now and five of them are administrative. So I'd really like to find a way to bring people in more. The other thing that I have been doing is speaking with other townships. And asking about how they have created committees within their township to get citizen engagement. And I know we spoke a little bit about it at our work session. But I'd like to get people thinking about what kind of committees they'd like to have in the township. Like a beautification committee to plant flowers on random corners or to clean up days in Piermont. Or committees to check on senior people in the heat. It can be like overwhelming or. There's any number of them. There are quite a few different committees out there in the different townships. There's no R C O R Cs governing them, so we just need to decide we want to do them and implement them. So I'd like to start fishing for some ideas and subject some. Suggestions from the residents in the township. The last thing that I want to add is kind of a a personal note. For those who may or may not know, Kevin O'Boyle, who was our. Editor for the Brookville Star was very instrumental in encouraging me to run for township trustee. And he actually had a lot of history that he taught me about Perry Township and was a great support during the electoral process. So he was a good friend in covering Perry Township and making sure that we had good things in the star for a very long time. So I wanted to mention that I personally will miss him and and I think it's a great loss to our township. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. And trustee Hartshorn?
Yes, I just want to echo what trustee when said about Mr. Boyle, a great guy, didn't know him long, but man. He was just phenomenal. I can't say enough about him. He'll definitely be missed. So the ramp update for this month. I'm becoming very good friends with Mr. Kramer and. It seems that he had a severe family illness that has delayed him delivering the updated plans to the county. Building inspector. When I talked with him yesterday, he assured me they will be with the building inspector by Wednesday. I'm going to be following up on Thursday. Just to make sure. I've been given this a little bit of rope because I know there's been a lot of stuff going on and there's been a lot of shifting priorities. Both from the work that they're doing across the county as well as the impacts of the COVID nineteen impact so. But I let him know that moving forward, I'm going to be pinging him a little bit more often just to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. He had no problems with that. In the last month, the meetings I've attended, I've attended, excuse me, two Miami Township Board of Trustees meetings. The a number of meetings with the Miami Valley. Resource Planning Commission, their disaster recovery as well as their tech meetings. The CARES Act question and answer session that the state auditor's office ran that was very helpful before heading into our last work session. And the Perry Township B Z A meeting. That I'm looking forward to going to those on a more regular basis. For the web and email hosting, I developed and distributed instructions for setting up the new email accounts and distributed those to. Well, I think trustee mirrors was the one who I distributed them to. Everybody else I've been able to have a more active hand in helping them set up what they need to set up. I troubleshoot the issues with AOL. They have an undocumented process for connecting to a third party email application, which now I'm aware of it. It'll make it easier for us to archive off all of the emails that. For anyone who is using an AOL address, that way they they'll be able to use those moving forward when we shut off those accounts. So that'll be helpful. I was able to share the website development progress with fiscal officer and trustees during the working session. Glad that they're giving me the input that I need to be able to move forward with this. And currently the cemetery page is the focus. The package we have allows for development of two pages using their online tools. So for that, I created a main page that has information about the township. It's still raw. It's got some placeholders in it here and there. That I'm looking to get with the Brookville Historical Society to get some more information to help flush out a little bit more of, you know. What, where and how is Perry Township? But beyond that, the current focus is doing the cemetery page, which will identify. History as available. Alternate names, physical locations of both the four active cemeteries and the inactive cemeteries in Perry Township. I was able to submit the cemetery grant to the state of Ohio last week. The cutoff date for that was much closer this year than it had been in past years. And we, as I was talking with Mike Craft and fiscal officer banking. The key was is that we didn't want to go for a large grant. We figured that if that we could do the patch repair of the plaster at Pleasant Hill Cemetery's archway. And repaint it using the the road crew and. Maybe some other people if they want to participate. In repainting it for about a thousand dollars. So we requested the the grand of a thousand dollars. And that's submitted and we're looking forward to hearing back on that. Last week I was able to talk, sit down and talk with Chief Littleton and Sergeant Hustler. They are looking, they've looked at their budget and they'd really like to pursue getting a police building on the property where the township offices are. They've got a rough floor plan. Rough dimensions. And I had told them that through the OTAs this last January, I know that USDA has grants especially for this and it looks like based on the money that they have available. They'd be there. The police are willing to shift a new vehicle that they were planning to get in two years. To be able to pay up to fifty thousand dollars towards the bill, the building of a new building. And I, the building that they're currently looking at with their rough floor plan, I think it's fifty by eighty feet. So I am reaching out to the people that I met at the OTAs from USDA to start talking to them about. Pursuing this. I've, I had the contact information for the Ohio Regional Point of Contact who I'm reaching out to later this week. And we're going to see how we can get there. So more to come on that. It's in a very, very early stages. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody for that.
Trustee mirrors is your new email active?
No, not yet. I have to get with trustee Hartshorn. Jason, I'll be getting in touch with you.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, and any new business? It, okay, so I I did receive an email today and Jason, I think this is something that I think that we should put on the webpage. But it's from the soil waste and advisory committee. Received it. It says, I'm reaching out to share some exciting news with you in regards to our CARE Act office. This is a press release with more detailed information is attached. Basically what it's doing is. They're, they are launching grants for mortgage and rent relief relief, which will help homeowner, homeowners and renters affected by the pandemic. So it will have, I'll get that to you, Jason. You can put that on here. It has their website and a phone number and all the other information in case anybody, you know, in the township where anywhere needs needs that information and how to go about applying for it.
Okay, sounds good.
And that's all I have on new business. Anybody else?
We had discussed in our work. Session. The potential changes with the B Z A and payroll. Would that be a new business that we would need to vote on? Or have we contacted people on that? And we got what four out of five answers already?
I have not reached out to to the fifth. B Z A board member or the two alternates. I didn't know that was going to wait till the next B Z A meeting so they could discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we we basically left that. We weren't gonna push the B Z A, but we asked the B Z A members that were in attendance to reach out to the other ones. And find out for us, so.
I just didn't know if there was a resolution to that or not.
No, they're basically donating their salaries for the for the year and that's their choice. I don't think that requires a resolution.
Okay, any old business? Okay, and it looks like we have a visitor, Mr. Hypes. Can you hear me, Mr. Hypes?
I can hear you.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and? Tell us what you got?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And I don't think you can see me, right?
No.
I don't know what happened. Anyway. I was there a few weeks ago. I think you probably have a copy of the plot plan of the farm acre each year. The reason I'm interested in that strip of land by the Eversole Cemetery is I have two sons and I'm going to split my twenty four acres into two twelve acre. Lots now rather than have them deal with it later. It might, the one twelve acre across from the cemetery will probably end up being a future home site anyway. And the main reason to do something immediate is because the ground the last couple of years has really eroded very bad. Driving in and out of that field. And I'm going to do something with that after the crop is gone. I have a large culvert I'll put across there and then taper it down with some. Field dirt. But I want to make sure that it's okay to do anything because some of this might end up being five, six, eight feet on to that thirty foot. Thirty three foot stretch of land there for the Eversole Cemetery. And the second reason I wanted to talk to you is. If nothing happens, just to get a guarantee that I'm able to get in and out of that field, you know, in years to come. And. And then I wanted to see if if that, if I couldn't purchase any of that strip, even half of it. How much effect that has on the road frontage for that twelve acre potential. Lot there. So my first question would be, is there any interest in the township selling half or all of that? Two hundred and sixty foot stretch of land there across from the cemetery?
In my opinion, I'm sorry, no, I would, I would, I would say that I would not sell it.
Okay.
Um, I called past trustee Jerry Peters today.
Right.
And. He said that is part of a deeded cemetery. And it probably needs to stay in that same track. The survey and cost would probably cost the township a lot more than what you're going to get any money from it.
Right.
Jerry Peters was not very, he was not, he's think the township would have a hard time splitting that off from the cemetery. He just kept saying that's part of a deeded cemetery. He did not know if that would even be possible to do.
Right. I just saw on the plan here, it shows a separate dimensions. I didn't, that two tenths of an acre. That's about eleven. I didn't know if you had a separate deed for that since it was across the road or how that was.
I would have to check the lockbox to see if there was a separate deed. But Eversole Church, you know, gave all that to the township to maintain.
Right.
Yeah, and that 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 I think that the place that you're talking about, Mr. Hypes is. It's thirty three by two hundred and sixty strip, strip of land there.
Correct.
Okay.
Now. I don't think there would be a problem if he was putting in his drainage shell or whatever else and it had abutted to that piece of land. Is there any thoughts on, because you did mention that, Mr. Hypes, didn't you? That it's possible that if you were going to do what you were going to do, that it would impede on that land a bit?
Probably with tapering that so it'd be a nice even for a more. Economical way to get in the field and a better way to get in the field. It probably would come up on that. Strip, you know, X number of feet, right? So it isn't such a. Step or a steep step to get in and out of there.
Right, and you have been using that land to get in and out of your fields for some time now, right?
Sixty eight years that I've been alive, yeah.
So. I only heard maybe a little bit from. Mr. Craft on this. Do we know Mr. Craft's stance on? You know, this being affected by the grading so that it's more. Of a better entrance way into the fields there. Is there any issue? With. What Mr. Hypes wants to do with the impact of that strip?
I know the few times that I have talked to Mr. Craft regarding that, you know, I know that he that. Mr. Hypes has had permission for, like he said, so many years going in and out. Improving it or putting whatever he wants to do with it. I think we need to run that by Mr. Craft first before, you know, we do anything. Yeah.
Right, I didn't know if anybody had that insight or you needed to get that insight, so.
Because I don't think that was, I don't think that was ever brought up to Mr. Mr. Craft, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Understand correctly, we've already granted an easement to use that property as an egress or?
No, we just gave him permission to use it.
Verbal permission.
Yeah, so just go ahead. You're fine. Do we need to do something official in order for him to use that?
Yeah, before, ten years ago, when I moved over here, I was talking to the township then Jerry Peters and Dale Sim and I forget who else was on there. I told him I wanted to clean it all up and need to trim the trees and what have you. And he said, the only thing I got would do would help the looks of the property. And as far as getting in and out there, you know, he's, he at that time, he said, there is no issue with that. But you know, we're ten years down the road now. But, you know, we're ten years down the road now. I just wanted to make sure that probably maybe we need a resolution or something in writing for the next twenty years, ninety-nine years, whatever you want to do, that somebody beyond me would have access to get in and out of there because that's the only way to get in and out of that field, uh, safely.
And that is a question I have. What created this to get in and out of that field on that portion that belongs to Eversole Cemetery? I'm confused on that part.
Is, yeah, is there no other way you can get into that field?
Uh, there's a drive down by the bridge. It's, it's a lot more narrow. And to come out of that drive with a tractor, you know, you, a car come over that hill, you know how fast they can drive. It would be very dangerous. Up here on top of the hill, you can see both directions. That's the ra, main reason we use that. Plus, it's a lot wider for the bigger equipment everyone uses nowadays.
Well, if, if I could make a suggestion, I would like to table this until we have a chance to talk to Mr. Craft and get his, get his feelings on this because I think I need a little bit more information. I know in my heart of hearts, I don't, I won't, I don't want to sell the property. Um, like Ms. Lynn was talking about with the history. I mean, right here, it tells you the horse and buggies parked there to carry, you know, so that's part of our history. I just don't think the township's in a place to sell it. Um, so I would like to make a suggestion that we just table this until we get some more information.
Okay, Ms. Mears, uh, one, one other thing, if the west half of this, hundred-and-thirty feet, would really be all that I would need. If, if you would even consider selling half of it, that would be fine too. So once you talk to Mike, then we can talk about it later on and see what you think.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, we'll table it and then as soon as we get some information from Mr. Craft, then we'll get back with you. Would that be okay?
That's fine.
Okay, great.
And again, if I may speak up, remember Jerry Peters' comment was saying he does not think that anyone could be sold.
Right, so you're going to check the lockbox for that, correct?
Yes, but, I mean, even if the township does own it, Mr. Peters said it is part of a deeded cemetery and don't think you can just take some of that and, and sell it.
Right, so that's why, that's, that's why we're tableing it to just ask basically if he can, if he wants to put a tile in or improve it or whatever, if that will affect Mike with that property in any way. And then we'll find out about the deed and, uh, if it's deeded.
Well, it is deeded. It's just saying, and, and I don't really know what Mr. Peters meant by that. But he said, if you, it is, we have a deed for it.
Right.
Part of the cemetery and he don't believe you can sell any part of a cemetery. The township don't have that ability to sell any part of the cemetery since it is a deeded cemetery.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Okay, yep, we'll just table that. We'll look into that and we'll look into the other issue. And as soon as we find out, Mr. Hypes, we'll get back to you. If that's all right.
Yeah, will that be really a phone call or a letter or how, how you want to do that?
Uh, well, we'll have to, it will have to.
Log in the next meeting.
Yeah, why, that would probably be a good idea because we're going to have to check, we're going to, since trustees can't meet together, we all have to do our investigation and then we'll get back with you, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, is there anybody else that has anything else that they'd like to say? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I can't.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, bye-bye.
Good night, guys.
Night.